It's now six o'clock. I will call this regular city council meeting order. If you will rise, I'll read some patient call by the way. Tell my father, thank for his day. Thank you for the many blessings you have given us. Be with all those that are sick and hurting and be with the people in the panhandle of Texas and Oklahoma and with the wildfires and with all the other weather going around the country. Help everyone who travels this holiday season. Christ on your prayer. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. At this time, we will consider and approve the resolution of the city council establishing a city council policy regarding House Bill 2840, public comment requirement. Brian, you want to fill in?
Certainly. In the recent legislative session effective September 1, House Bill 2840 made a key change where previously, public comment was allowed and you could have it on any non-agenda items. The law changed and requires that you allow public comment on agenda items. And the council can adopt reasonable procedures that relate to that. And so what you have is a resolution that states how City of Littlefield will do it, having it basically at the beginning of public comments on all agenda items. The individual will need to complete the public comment form that says which agenda items they want to talk about, and so it can proceed in an orderly manner. And that's kind of a, except limit to three minutes. The new law also requires if translation is required, then the person speaking a foreign language gets twice that amount. And so those are the key parts that we're trying to make in our policy here. So I would help you to answer any questions related to it.
I was kind of reading section four, and I don't know if I missed it, but when the citizen makes a comment about an agenda item, is it just for the citizen? Can the council interject or after the three minutes, can we make comments or?
Well, so to respond to questions, the mayor will do that, right? Her comments during the public comments. Obviously, when you get to the agenda item, if there's something as part that the council wants to talk about, you can certainly do that.
Okay, we have to wait.
So the gist of this is that the citizens have to know what's going on before the meeting starts, and they have to have an idea of what items are on the agenda. They go up and say, "We want to talk about this item," before everything happens. So they can't talk during the agenda item at all. Is that what this plan is?
Well, the way, yeah, the way we have it is during the public comments only on agenda items.
Well, we, as a council, only get the information for what items are on the council the Friday before the meeting, so, you know, we're almost as less informed as they are. So I was thinking that it would be a good idea to talk, to have them discuss things with us during the item, so that that would be the appropriate time that we can respond to them, and not only have the mayor respond, but the council as a whole. Because that's, we all make decisions, not the mayor.
Fair enough.
Josh, comment?
I, Brian, who has the guy amongst this, she all think he's in this for a lot of cities, I guess.
Yeah, Slater and I looked at this, and it's also applicable to school districts. We represent that school district, and so, well, school attorneys have looked at this as well. Ben, what you were suggesting is certainly allowable, right? I mean, it's just a preference as far as a city council or a school board, whether the public comments on agenda items are to be allowed at the beginning of a meeting or, you know, as each agenda item happens, so.
But I think the point is, like we were talking before the meeting, the majority of cities are doing it upfront, where if the agenda's posted, if people have an issue that's important to them, they'll be prepared and speak about that agenda item, instead of going through each to try to maintain order and going through each agenda item and then having discussion and, you know, deliberation and, um, yeah.
Well, it makes it, this way, it makes it in a timely manner. I mean, if we're going to sit there and discuss every item with every citizen, we'll be here till midnight.
Well, as you know, we don't have a lot of people turn out for city council meetings, and I don't mind being here till midnight, because if we have citizens with enough comments who really wanted to speak about what's going on in the city, that's what we're here for. And it's the best time for them to actually get here and communicate with us, rather than going to each one of us individually before a city council meeting.
Well, and I think the citizens can also do what I do, is I give the agenda packet, and if I have any questions, I either call Mitch, or I'll call Andrew, or call Sarah and get my questions answered that way. That way, when I get here, you know, it doesn't make for a long meeting. I've already had my question answered, you know? Now, if the citizen wants to look at the agenda item and go talk to the city manager and get his answer, and the citizen's still not happy, then, you know, I could see making a comment, you know?
That's the point of it, so that a citizen can come that's well-informed. They do have to sign something that says their statements are going to be truthful to the best of their knowledge, and it's to come, they're either going to go get their questions answered by city staff or their council person. And if they're unhappy with the answer, they can come express their displeasure. They can come express their support of something, or they can just do, like we many times have had in the past, where endless threats, you know? And so instead of having endless threats about lawsuits at every agenda item, they can just sign up and say, "Y'all are sorry, I'm going to sue you," and say it all at the first of the meeting. So, you know, it just helps maintain order, in my opinion, a little better to have it here. Hopefully, they'll go talk to city staff and their council people first, and then can come talk. If they don't get the answer they like, they can come address the council. Can you explain the reason why they have been here, the mayor responds to questions upon us?
Well, I think, again, just to keep things orderly, it's not, in the new law, it's not that a public debate is, it's public, it's comment from the citizens on agenda items. It's not, we don't need to have every council member respond to every comment. That's not what's required. What, it's still a public meeting, so your deliberations and discussions back and forth are in front of the public, and so the public can be informed. But that's just really a way to keep things orderly.
Good, good question.
Again, are we going to do this before it all starts? Or are we going to have the items, have the discussion before each item? If I were to talk about that one?
I would like to have it at the beginning. That way, people can put their thoughts down, we can get registered, we can get the list, know who's going to talk, address it upfront, and then move on.
So there will be no public discussion? Nobody will be, nobody will interact with the council or the mayor at any other time during the meeting?
I don't think this prohibits that. I mean, there's occasions when one of the council members might call somebody to, like a staff member or something like that, or maybe it's more than public, it's a way in form, to help with the discussion. But, you know, once a motion's made, then only the council and myself can discuss after the, after the motion is made and debate over the issue. But that, my understanding and the reason why the mayor is singled out as answering, there's two different things I understand about this, is there's, one is to address the council, and one is to comment. If you comment during a public comment, and it's not an item on the agenda, then you can violate open meetings rules. So that comment is to be received, but you cannot answer the comment. Now, if they're going to address the council, to me, that is asking for a response of some sort, is to address. And that's why it would be, it would make sense for just one person to respond to a citizen addressing at that time, because you just really need one person responding to somebody addressing, because an answer one council member might be different than an answer from another council member. So that was the reason that was locked down.
And the point, I think, is to hear their concerns and then be able to deliberate with, you know, if somebody comes up and says, "I really don't think you do this because of this, here's the reasons why," and you agree with them, you can expand on their comments and as a part of the discussion, but to help keep order as well.
As part of the discussion, sometimes other ideas and questions come up that are necessary to make the decisions based on whatever the item is. So that's why I believe that interaction with the public during the meeting, during that item is important, and it just happened when I addressed the mayor.
Well, hopefully, they came to city staff and their council members before then if they have deep concerns, so that everyone can be, that person can be prepared also to support their claims.
Do you have a motion to either accept this one or accept the one version of this?
Well, I went through this, and it sounds good. That was the only question I had. I didn't know, send them, I just kind of wanted a clarification on that number four. I make a motion that we accept this resolution as written.
Motion's been made by Michael. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Two, two opposed, ready? The motion carries. Next, we'll have a public comment of all agenda items, because this agenda item is just this resolution in passing, they would like to make a comment during this time. If you go see Janine and put your names up there. If there is no one, we'll move on. This time, Mitch will have an introduction, new city employees, presentation of information regarding upcoming 2020 census. Mitch, is this you or Janine?
This is Ms. Lozada here. Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Alice Lozada, and I'm a partnership specialist with the 2020 census. And what we've been doing is we have been presenting information to city governments, such as the commissioners' courts, city councils, chambers of commerce, bank-based groups, schools, the ISDs, and so we've been sharing information about the upcoming 2020 census, which is just right around the corner. In your folder on the left side, we have 2020 census at a glance. And it just talks about some of the key milestones that we've currently been involved in. At this point in 2019, partnership activities have launched, and what we have been doing is partnering with all of the various entities that I just mentioned. And so we continue to share, educate our communities about the upcoming census. And so as we're preparing for April 1 of 2020, in January, you will start seeing media advertising, you will start seeing public service announcements on the radio, television, about the upcoming 2020 census and its importance. For, and in addition to your handout, you've also got another handout right behind that one on the left side, it says 2020 census key dates. So you've got that as well, and it's also giving you information about what will be happening. In February of 2020, they will conduct an operation called group quarters. And what group quarters is, is that the people living in dorms, nursing homes, prisons, perhaps RV parks, homeless situations, will, they will do group kind of counting to make sure that everyone is counted in their various locations. And so that will take a special effort to make sure that we can count everyone in those particular situations. Everyone will receive a letter inviting you to respond to the 2020 census at the beginning of March. And so everyone will receive that letter, and then, for the first time ever, we will be able to respond online. So it goes live March 12, where people can respond online, they can respond by phone or by mail. And if the Census Bureau does not start receiving responses back, then at the latter part of April, beginning of May, then we have what's called non-response follow-up. And what that is, is that people will come knocking at doors and trying to see if they can engage those folks that have not responded to the census. The census will consist of 10 questions, and it will, it will take about 10 minutes to fill out. And so that's going to be, for the first time, that that's ever been done. In your folder, you will also find a flyer called Census 101, and it's in English and Spanish. It's on the left side of the folder, and it's basically putting everything in a nutshell. Everyone counts. It's in the Constitution. It's about fair representation, because every 10 years, the results of the census are used to reapportion the House of Representatives, determining how many seats each state will get. In 2010, Texas was able to gain four congressional seats. So it's anticipated that Texas will probably gain some more seats. We don't know about West Texas, however, but, you know, we're anticipating that there will be allocation of additional seats. It's about $675 billion that are distributed to the state of Texas every year for various programs based on census counts. And I was visiting with the city manager prior to the meeting and just sharing a little bit about the distribution of dollars that come to your city and to your county based on census counts. The money is given to, for instance, educational programs, Medicare, Medicaid. There's, let's see, there's also senior citizens programs, roads, sometimes libraries are assisted. There's just a variety of all kinds of services that receive funding based on census counts. And so that is why cities and counties are doing all that they can to make sure that they count everyone in their community, because everyone actually contributes to the dollars that come back to your community. It's about redistricting. So after each census, the state officials use the results to redraw the boundaries of their congressional and state legislative districts, adapting to population shifts. So that basically, that Census 101 is something that can be duplicated, which can be taken forward to different groups, to your constituents, to different people, so that they can understand the importance of participating in the 2020 census. So, and then I'll also be happy to share the JPEG version of it with any of you or any of your groups, if you would like to have that. I have the ability to share that with you. Now, in your folder, I've also included what is called hard-to-count populations. And each community actually has segments of their community that would be considered hard to count. So as you can see, these are people that may be hard to interview, hard to locate, hard to contact, hard to persuade, suspicious of the government, low levels of civic involvement or civic engagement. They may be highly mobile, you know, just a variety of reasons why they could be considered hard to count. Well, one of the things that the cities and the communities that I've been working with some of the counties, they have formed what's called complete count committees within their own community, and these committees are coming together. It's just people that have been either appointed by city council members. They come together and they strategize how they're going to make sure that everyone in their community, with particular emphasis on the hard-to-count communities, are reached to make sure that they respond to the 2020 census. So that's a consideration for you all to take up at another meeting, but also to go along with that, the complete count committees that have already been formed are different people from your community. It could be your superintendents, your schoolteachers, your bank-based groups, your, you know, people from within your city government or from your county. The county commissioners for a land county have already received a presentation on the 2020 census earlier this year as well. And so it can also include someone from the media, because your media person can also share information about the 2020 census and get it out to your community. So these are just some ideas for you all to consider, because on the right side, you have the message from Kathy Lacy, she's our regional director, and that's exactly what she's talking about, is the complete count committees are a major vehicle for planning and implementing local targeted efforts that will uniquely address the special characteristics of your community. So those are some considerations for you all to think about. And so that's basically what I have for you all. I hope that you all will consider possibly passing a resolution. Many cities and counties have already passed resolutions in support of the 2020 census, because they recognize how important it is. It happens every 10 years, so you get one shot at it for the next 10 years. So those numbers that go in at the end in December of next year, that's what everybody will get locked into. So that's why communities are working very hard to try to make sure that they can reach out to everyone, encourage your family members, your constituents, your groups, your organizations that you may be a part of as well, to understand a little bit more about the 2020 census. I'll be happy to work with you all if you decide to form a complete count committee, which can be formed rather quickly, because the timeframe, March 12 is just around the corner, and so as the beginning point of the 2020 census. But if you all decide to do that, I work with other complete count committees, support them, provide information to them whenever they do come together, they meet at least once a month, but these are people that you all would have from your own community that you may want to consider, as well as your resolution. So anyway, does anyone have any questions or anything that I might need to answer?
Is the census online only this year?
Well, no, you'll be, no, people will still be able to respond by mail if they want to, but it's just an option to make it easier for people to respond. And they thought that if they put this online, that it would reduce the number of enumerators that come out. The enumerators are the ones that do the non-response follow-up. So if the Census Bureau does not receive anything either online, by phone, by mail, then that's when they will start working with the non-response follow-up. I have partnered with your library director, because when I was here and I presented to the county commissioners, I was able to do it with your library director, who is going to be instrumental in providing computer lab availability for people that may want to respond online. So libraries across all of West Texas are going to come on board to assist those people that may not have access to a computer or a phone and want to fill out their forms online. The schools are also going to be providing computer labs so that their parents can come in and also perhaps fill out their census forms online as well. So those are just options.
Any other questions, please? Thank you, and we'll be getting some stuff together to try to help with that.
Okay, let me know how I can assist. I am working with other counties and helping them as well. I provide resources to your group, to your community, and if you all have events or anything that you, you know, coming up, that you would like to have a census table or census information, you know, definitely I can assist with that as well. Thank you also.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we will consider and approve amendments from October 22 regular and November 18 special meetings. If there are no additions or corrections, can we get a motion to approve the amendment as read?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Michael.
Ready.
Ready. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider and approve the monthly departmental reports. Police department, fire department, EMS, coast, animal control, landfill, water wastewater streets, and parks, municipal reports, monthly financial, sales tax collection, property tax collection, eligibility A and B, and more than that. You have a question to the left side of the page?
Page 110, there's a charge for Jbar and boot shop. Are we filing a safety tow boot for people? For every outdoor worker or?
Yeah, other workers and utilities. That's part of it.
Make you a pair of boots for the year, is that right?
We getting, I don't know pages on it. I just noticed that Justin Valderas, does he work for, you work for Economic Department or you work for City of Littlefield?
Economic Department.
Saying why does City of Littlefield pay a little over our budget?
It probably goes to that 620, anything that shows up.
I notice a few expenses.
Yeah, that line item underneath, anything to him is 01620, and we reimburse anything paid out of 01620.
Reimbursed?
Yes, every month.
Okay. I didn't see a reimbursement of that.
Well, those are just checks issued, or they're not usually checks, you know, it's not revenue items, so the expenses come out of that.
Any other questions?
I did, page 33. On your public service department, you have alley work orders. No, we got an employee going through the alley, right? Thank you.
On the rear loader?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they work the alleys, work the work orders for the alley.
I guess my question is, he, that's what he's doing, that's his job to go down the alley to pick up whatever's by the dustbin. Does that not go into alley work orders? Because, I mean, we got 15 this month. I'm hoping he's picking up more than. Is that different from his job, I guess?
Yes, yes.
There's just a few things that kind of affect that number. One of the things is we hope it goes way down because of our collections portion, and we have, actually, I think, I have seen kind of noticed a difference in less alleys to...
And a work order is only issued if my department receives it, a committee or...
Okay, okay. So it's type two, they drive, but they also...
Okay, okay. That, yeah, that was my question, sorry.
Kind of brings up a little challenge somehow to be down that one pile of work orders, which I have.
Kevin, saw your letter of resignation here. Hate to see you go, thanks for everything you've done, great part of the head. Wish you much luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Is there any other question on the monthly departmental reports? Now, can we get a motion approving reports?
I'll make a motion to re-put departmental reports.
Motion's been made by Michael. Motion's been made by Michael, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded by, made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider and approve a resolution, certification and program assurances and commitment letter for the application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for a non-urban outdoor recreational grant. Mitch?
This is the application we talked about last month, when you did about, it raised the limit of the non-urban outdoor to 750,000, and we would match 750,000. So we'd get majority of the pool pipe for there if we could get this grant, and we'd be, would need to handle the $750,000. In this, we looked at just the swimming pool and the stuff to make that work. We left the pool house out, and we left engineering and the entryway out to try to get the number closer to the 1.4, 1.5 million. And that was at the recommendation of South Transocean for giving the second ones that were writing the grant, hoping that we might, one of the things they've done is they've taken out the penalty for not having a parks plan finished, which should help us some, help us possibly get a better rate deal, getting this grant. We should find out, I believe they said April, we should find out if we got this grant
So this is just some resolutions along with this process here?
Right, and this is what you like to create, so to make this application. They've all got written up, they're ready to go, so if we trigger on it, we'll get the plan for it.
What is the timeframe, if we were to get the grant, what's the timeframe implication on that?
I, you're probably looking at after the, after a letter to start work, you're looking at probably nine months to build a pool, I think at least, to build it. We should find out in April if we've got the grant, so the next item, we're still bringing that up yet, but if you do decide to apply for this, could, would, could start a period agreement, which would start some of the engineering work and shorten the period from a year down to probably nine months or eight.
So you have the plans on work coming up at the 750,000, minus the engineering fees, obviously the park fund will have a little bit left over at the engineering fees.
Conversation in the past has been, at that point, the prison will be paid off by February 2021, which will freeze up our cash flow a lot. That's why this discussion is getting more time-relevant, is that if we, we're trying to keep moving forward on this and knowing that we would have to bond out a portion of this to pay for that, and then those debt service payments could be arranged once the prison's paid for and could start supporting that debt service. So it's kind of starting to get real. This will be our third time to apply for this grant. The numbers have increased. Be great if we did, if we don't, still, we'll talk about that in the next agenda item, but wanting to be prepared to keep moving forward.
Any other questions about this grant application? Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution, certification and program assurance and commitment letter, for application to the Parks, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will consider and approve an engineering contract for a aquatic center excluding the bath house and concession stand, if any, if you write Mitch.
Yes, this is, I've got Alan Holly here, he's one that prepared this contract and sent it to the attorney's to look over it. I had a couple of small additions to it, and I believe we've got all of those incorporated in here and ready to go. Now, I don't know if we're going to drill all the way out here or if I was going to say so.
Yeah, I mean, basically, my name's Alan Holly, I'm with Park else, Mr. Cooper, I'm an engineer with them. I've had the privilege of designing a few of these facilities now. Couple of them are pretty old, one in Millshue on the ground hill, they're real similar to this facility, and they are good recreational enhancing facilities to have in communities like Luther. So, yeah, this contract is basically an agreement for the engineering, basic services that we would provide, in the design of this aquatic facility. We, it does not include surveying or geotech, which we, you know, we could amend the contract for those services. We have surveying services that we do provide, so, and then, of course, you know, for the design, we're going to need geotech, we need some geotechnical investigation for basically the shell, concrete shell of the pool, and then also your ears and foundations for the slides, foundations that we might want to consider at least, in the design of, maybe the bath house, you know, the foundation for equipment.
At what stage of the process would they do the technical stuff?
You know, I, we could possibly hold off on the geotech, because what will happen is, you know, the slide, if we want to go with a slide, the slide manufacturer will be the one to provide the design for the boot, and they'll need, of course, and the geotech investigation for that design. Also, the shell of the pool will need to be designed by, if we, you know, we'll most likely get a full contractor that's certified. With a pool of this magnitude, you're going to want to make sure you get a full contractor that's certified to build this facility, and that full contractor will hire a structural engineer that's licensed in the state of Texas that specializes in aquatic facilities to design that. So at that time, they would need, of course, the geotech investigation, you know, to provide the design for that.
Why do we not have that included if we have bidding and negotiating phase and construction phase on here? Why would we not do the geotech also?
Well, I'm always kind of considering that, not part of the engineering, but a part of the thing that the, that the city will, will get on its own to, like, testing materials and things like that, the testing of the concrete, we want that done, you know, by the cities, but, you know, we could add it in there, I mean, that's something to be added.
I can amend this, we can, we'll coordinate those, we don't, of course, have those services, but definitely coordinate with the geotech company to get that, and then they can go through us for invoicing and helping, you know, provide those services.
Really kind of want anything, you know, in the market, when you do stuff.
Yeah, that's the thing, is if they go through us, well, then, you know, typically for, to account for our efforts and make, you know, that coordination effort, then we'll mark it up, you know, 15%.
So your idea was to go get the geotech?
Save a little money, yeah. I mean, this whole thing, we're trying to save money.
Just trying to be clear on that.
That's a good question, but backing up a little bit, you know, this was designed that, that after Public Input, the full committee met on a few times, this is the recommendation that came with it, was this general layout, and which gives you all the direction to go. And then, and like my mentor said, I want, I want to do a design build type construction for the pool house and the entryway. I think I can save a lot of money doing that, and be able to finish that, you know, about the time, about the time the pool is starting to get complete, so just kind of do it in tandem. But that could possibly involve the guys again on that part, but the last time I did that, I ended up doing a design build on the pool house, and it did sacrifice a good move. If that doesn't really have anything to do with this, this contract. Now, if you do approve this, this would give us kind of a head start and should be well engineered by the time we find out if we get the grant on the, on the swimming pool. So that could be kind of go hand in hand to get a good start on that, by the time we want to move it along a little faster.
Any other questions for Alan?
I almost knew that you're, the end of the year, December 31st, your hourly rate schedule is going to be probably reset in January. Any big changes you see in that?
No, sir. I live in.
Process maybe remaining the same?
Maybe.
Not going up?
I haven't seen one yet. No, I don't see our price going up.
It really has to have this maybe in January, so we really.
I'll tell you what, I can definitely find out if.
We need to enter the contract with you, though, or?
No, it says, it says after December 31st, invoices will reflect the schedule charges currently in that. Find print down at the bottom of that ledger?
Yeah, we'll see.
And it shouldn't be reasonable to try to freeze those till April?
Yeah, you know, I can definitely ask.
It might change our, our cost considerably if we go up, you know?
I'll find out about what, you know, if we know, or making to the future, what our
Any other questions, true? So you want to revisit this in January, Mitch, or see if you, we approve this based if you can freeze the costs?
I don't think that's going to be a big issue on that, on the dollar amount over the extra hourly rate. I don't think that's going to be up seriously.
Those hourly rates do, you know, the way you see before you, the 140, 150, that's all I'm saying, it's not the hourly rate. So the only time the hourly rates can come into play would be for any kind of additional services that we might do. That's what's.
We're not planning on having a resident engineer sitting on the job, you know, all the time, it's not something I'm planning.
How long will it, it takes you about three months, why?
Yes, sir. Probably three, start with the pool, set up in the area, angle aside, utilities, that's one we pulled up, all the problems involved.
We have the money available in the park fund. Is that fine, park fund for this?
So if we were to approve this, when would you, when would you be able to start it, I guess, on the engineering part?
I would need to definitely coordinate with, I'm going to need a survey, I'd need a survey, that's the first thing we need to do.
Of the property?
Of the property.
Norris, David?
Topographic survey, basically, yeah.
I think Norris has that done, or close?
We have a survey, existence survey.
And he has to topo most of that, I think, from previous developments.
If he does, then, yeah.
It's all within Mitch.
I mean, with us being this close at the end of the year, would you be able to start before the first of the year?
Any more discussion or entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion, we consider and approve engineering contract at Aquatic Center, excluding the bath house and the session standing entryway.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider and approve construction, thank you, Alan. Next, we'll consider and approve a construction of 5,800 feet fence as required by TCQ, SEP claim for Old Landfield number 1298, closure and remand budget. Mitch?
Going back to July of 18, we, I've been working on getting this landfill closed, we've been up and down and around the corner and around the bend with the engineer working hard on negotiating things back and forth, and we've been bids on different things, and this is one of the few things that we've got, we have to pay for to put in. And I've asked, I talked to six fence builders, got three bids, two of them in your packet. There's a chain link fence for 88,000 from Allstate, have a net mesh fence like it's the airport from J4 for 38,000. I just received a bid today that's galvanized toasts with this five strand barbed wire. That's the minimum requirement that the state is requiring this, a landfill fence, 5,800 foot long or close to that, and the bid I got today was for 22,000. So, I mean, you've got your options there, this is something we have to do, we have to be finished up with that by January 30th, and I need to pull the trigger on this as soon as possible so we can get this finished and stay upon us.
Was J4 not interested in doing it with the barbed wire like?
I said they just really couldn't do that, they just were outside there.
Do they know it's supposed to be eight foot and not six foot? Could they put a bid in for six foot?
Yeah, I'd ask them for six foot, actually six foot's higher than eight foot, but we could probably get that down a little bit if we wanted to go with, with the higher mesh stuff.
No, the department says it must be an eight foot fence, they put in a bid for a six foot fence.
Yeah.
And you said it's going to be cheaper for an eight foot?
He said it'd be, he said eight foot's going to be shit less expensive than the six foot.
I need to make sure on that.
Yeah, no, it doesn't sound right, but that's, that's what he said.
This is the J4 or the same amount?
Yeah, he's, they're geared up for eight foot fence, so whatever they do with the six foot would be. When I got this bid, I was under pressure, we might be able to go with a six foot, but after talking to all of them, we're, we're going to have to go with eight foot.
Also in their bid, there's no fee for removal of the old fence, as there is another bid. Are we going to end up doing that, or they going to do it, or do they want to bid less?
We could do it, but I do have this little bid here for, in any case. We could do it, but I do have this lower bid here for, in any way, rather than the old fence, one for still.
Who's that little bid from, Mitch?
Kenny.
Can he build the fence and remove it, remove the old one?
Yeah, for 22,000.
Yeah, but you got to remember, the lower bid is for a barbed wire fence?
Yeah, it's for a five strand barbed wire, eight foot tall.
And that's the minimum requirements that the state.
Yeah, but how much trash is that going to stop? The wind blowing trash into that?
Hopefully there's not much blowing out there again.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be any trash blowing across there.
And that's true, but.
So what is the fence for?
It's a requirement that the TCQ has.
They don't have a reason for it though?
Yeah, well, the reason is to keep the wildlife off of it and the livestock, so that it won't mess up the vegetation cover that you.
And this is on the closing?
This is on the closing.
Circle the, the closing?
The closing, yeah.
I, I would say try to find out if students can do the mesh fence like we did. He doesn't have it.
He doesn't have it. As far as.
He's putting in galvanized posts, so.
Did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, well, I just got, but the galvanized posts were actually less expensive than the T post, so, yeah, it could do the, I bet it could do the mesh pretty close, it might be, not be a little warm, but.
Michael, I would agree with you, if it wasn't in the operating landfill, you know, maybe have some mesh to help catch some trash from flowing, but this is the westernmost part of the landfill, it's some grass pasture basically.
That five strand barbed wire on Kenny, yeah.
I mean, it's silly, it's just state bureaucracy, but it meets the requirement of TCQ. I mean, most barbed wire fences are six foot tall, but they're going to sew the wire instead of being this close together is going to be.
Rich did a good job of negotiating for us, but he couldn't win that one, they said, no, you got to have him.
But, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense probably because it's like your cost.
As far as his posts and all that stuff they, they show here, I guess as far as, you know, like on the corners and stuff, they're all going to be set, set three feet.
Upset two meters something on the corners to make.
Right, I mean, you know, but they're going to be set just like, it's kind of vague when you have them there where on the Allstate, you know, they're top of the year, you know, you're lying, probably scheduled for you, seven foot, set three foot, even concrete, you know, we're going to have a, you know, a minimum requirement, is this the state's requirement here, or?
That's not, this is above the state's requirement, that one is right up the state requirement.
Honestly, if it's going to be there and it'll last for as long as the state wants it, and we can spend as little as possible on it, let's do whatever it takes to get it done. I mean, if we can take 10,000 off of that, tell Kenny we're going to have some more dealing with it.
I just want to make sure that the panels and everything, it's constructed, it's all constructed right now, it's like a T post or barber.
Well, if I want to, if I want to do this, just say approve the fence with a limit of 25 or order or something like that, then I'll make sure.
If he's going to build a barbed wire fence, he's going to build H braces.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
He needs to add that to, he needs to have him add that to your bid, that he does understand he's got to add H braces on all the.
I don't have a problem with doing, I mean, it might have been the same, as far as saving money, I think we just need to have a little bit more clarity in that, in that proposal.
Absolutely, exactly. It's a very basic proposal, but, you know, I'm pretty certain it's going to do with you, but you never know for certain really. Oh, you want it this tight?
So, somebody entertained a motion of accepting the lowest bid with Ken Stidham as long as it meets TCQ requirements?
I'll make a motion, you win.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy, any further discussion?
And that's also to amend the budget, right?
And to amend the budget. It's directed.
Yeah, I'm F.
And to amend the budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll consider and approve payment of engineering fees for all our engineering in the amount of 27,500 for completion of two landfill sales and to amend the budget.
Back in July, in July of 18, when we approved this project, I worked, did the presentation and stuff, and we've been through a lot since then, and he's really worked hard to get these costs down, I mean, we had, at first, we were looking at $400,000 with the bid we had to dig the two cells and comply by digging the two cells and moving the dirt from those two cells to the old landfill, but that was, that was half a billion dollars, so we went back and redid everything over and over and, oh, he's done a really good job of negotiating with the state, and I think in three rounds of negotiations, he came up with a SEP closure plan agreement that is going to be one that we're going to be able to finish up and do without just spending, dropping money to comply with this. And if you recall, this was the, this was the, where we got cited from the TCQ for, I guess probably years and years of neglect on the old landfill, and I don't know why they all of a sudden decided that everything was no good, but that's what they did, and they forced us to close the old landfill or be set to pay fine after fine on the old landfill. So the council made the decision back last year to do this, and for reasons I really wouldn't like to talk about, I waited until now to pay any of these bills, I wanted to see what the final value was before, before we paid very much on this. And he did reduce, at the end, had $32,000 worth of bills for all of the work and stuff on the engineering and the kind of fight we had with the contractor over the, over the cells and, and everything, and he did come off 5,000 off of the bills, so, you know, I don't like to pay this stuff, but I recommend we wouldn't pay this, we're going to need him to finish this thing out for us and, and get clear of the TCQ requirements that they put on us for closing this landfill.
So we're close to the end of all of that stuff? Cells are done?
Oh, the cells are great, I know it's going to last us, they'll last us for several years, but.
This fence is, is part of it, is the covering done like it's supposed to be?
They've been working tirelessly on this thing and doing some overtime and stuff to get the old landfill, it doesn't look anything like it used to, it's smoothed over, it's really going to be good, and we've got to get some compassion, it's a close race between time and broken equipment, so we've, we've been riding everything pretty hard and the employees have finished with it, and they've done a really good job.
If there's no further discussion, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve payment of engineering fees for all our engineering in the amount of 27,500 for completion of two landfill sales and the budget amendment.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael, is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll discuss and consider advertising our RFP for bank and crosswind Florida Services, Mitch.
Well, it's time, or almost time, and state requires that we ever so often advertise for our main repository, so we're coming to approve a very simple advertisement, we'll put out for proposals and probably looking at those in the medium, and probably wait till January, you think, or try to do it in December? I think we're going to have to wait till, we'll have to wait till January to do this.
Have to do this every four years?
At least three. In three?
Well, the, the previous one was a two year with a three year option.
It's, I think it's a maximum.
So it was five years ago we did this last.
Who went, not Adrian?
Aim Bank.
Nothing.
Because it was my first year of working that we switched.
Not in this budget bank.
It's not replaced, we keep the same.
This is a state requirement, so can we get a motion to approve this RFP?
I'll make the motion. I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy, is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not all opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.